The time being nine o'clock, I would like to bring to order the special meeting of the Energy and Environmental Committee. Please take the role.
Kayaus, present.
Strathman?
Strathman here.
Wallace?
Present.
Bozniaki?
Present.
Bates?
Present, thank you. The minutes will be tabled until the next-
Shepro was called. Shepro present.
Is present. Anybody else want to check in?
Molina's present.
Good, Molina is present, thank you. We will be tabling the approval of the minutes until the next regularly scheduled environmental meeting. Sorry. To be scheduled for a couple of weeks from now. I would like to call public comment, please. Would any, we have three people here, three people who would like to speak. Could I ask, you'll have three minutes to speak. Would Paul Cameron like to come to the podium, please?
My wife's gonna go first.
Okay, that's fine. Please state your name, just to be formal.
I don't think-
Is that mic on?
No.
Carolyn, Cameron?
Thank you.
Chairman, Chairman, Shepro, point of information, if they're speaking to an agenda item, I believe they have five minutes.
To an agenda item, they have five minutes. Okay, please make that five minutes.
Okay, thank you. I had, I'm speaking regarding to the solar panel project. I snapped some photos from my window this morning that are a little bit more current because since we were last here, they have mowed the area that we, for where the panels are gonna go. And so I just wanted you to see what it looks like from our window. And I also wanted, wanted you to understand that this is not, I'm not concerned about a view from my balcony, this is the only view from our house. Other than looking out at bedrooms, our windows on our main floor, this is what we're gonna be looking at. There's a couple more pictures here. So this is more of a picture of the north soil pile. But since they've mowed it- Can we see the other pictures, please? I think it's even more evident that it's not just the elevation of that north pile, but it's elevated all along that area. I just do not see how landscaping is going to be a resolution for this view. I think you can see how elevated it is coming out of the north pile. Again, if, if this was level with the street, you could put tall trees up, fences or whatever, and block that view, but everything is so elevated, not just the area where the panels will be, but our main view is from the second floor. So I guess that's just my biggest concern, is the view, the entire view of our house is gonna be looking at solar panels, and I, I don't see a way that that's gonna be mitigated with any kind of landscaping. I don't feel confident either with the landscaping plan that was proposed. Nobody came out on site to look at anything when they proposed that landscaping proposal. I'm not a very good speaker, I apologize. I did send an email to all the county members, because I can express my views a little bit better in writing. So thank you for reading that, even though it's kind of lengthy. And probably my biggest concern is that we not sign a 25-year contract, not knowing if there's a way to affect the view from our house. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Cameron.
My name is Paul Cameron, I live at 3810 Ridge Point Drive. As my wife just shared, it is startling to see what the view of the site looks like today, now that the weeds and whatever had been growing on top of that area has, has been mowed down. And to imagine it only a few feet shorter than it is today, but then also to have panels on top of it is, is really quite startling. I believe we all support the solar initiative and the goals to be greener in this world. And while I think it's easy to get kind of lost in the ideas of we're creating a better environment for our children and our grandchildren in the future, I think what's been lost in this process is what's gonna happen to the people that have to live around this thing today. From the very beginning, it seems very apparent that the aesthetics have never really been a consideration. In fact, the views of the neighbor, from the neighborhood, were not even part of the feasibility study, or the landscaping, I should say. Weren't part of that study. So at this point in time, the funding doesn't make sense, because it's too expensive to take the berm pile down, we're being told. And then that the landscaping that we do hear about is, is somewhat minimal, and I don't think the estimates are accurate. We heard at the special homeowners meeting Monday night, that it was gonna be $50,000 to put in almost 25 trees. And that just doesn't seem reasonable. So I guess my focus, or what I'd like to try to express to you guys today, is that the choices you're making today aren't just for this solar environmental thing, it's affecting probably 100 homeowners that are gonna look at this thing for 25 years. And I just don't think you've thought through this carefully enough, and are keeping enough in your consideration in terms of being good neighbors. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cameron.
Good morning. Thank you for the opportunity to speak, and thank you for your service to the residents of King County. It's worth noting that the staff and board members we've interacted with have been very receptive and very good to work with, particularly Ivy Clea, as we've worked through the issues that various residents have raised. Should this project move forward as planned, there are about a half a dozen open items for discussion through resolution with the residents, and I thought I would articulate those for you. The residents have been asking for a more accurate project image or rendering depicting the panels on top of the soil pile and throughout the field. Secondly, fence selection and placement, there's, we're still looking for the fence all to be on the north side of the south berm, and decorative where seen from the road or from the homes. Third, landscape selection and placement, we believe it should be all spruce, and all on the north side of Brisher Road. And then fourth, certificate, a full vetting of the supply chain for this project. It was brought up Monday very articulately about the certification and verification that all material sourced for this project, as they really, especially as they relate to the panels, be sourced, not be sourced from countries noted have human rights issues, i.e. China and some other Pan Pacific countries. So that would be something that should be incorporated into any lease, that there be a certification, and then ultimate vetting and verification that that did not end up in the project. This is an older issue, but Ivy had mentioned in the past that there might be a solar, a sign highlighting the presence of a solar field along Brisher Road, if there's gonna be a sign. I think the residents would prefer that that be on Peck Road, and that they don't be reminded daily as they enter and leave the subdivision that they're living next to a solar field. And lastly, the spoils pile height or removal is a large open item at this point. We recognize there's considerable energy and momentum around building the project, and no resident has raised an issue with that green initiative. However, given the developer imposed deadline, and the need to get in queue for tax credits, it appears as though the project design and approval of the lease are a little bit ahead of themselves. And, you know, if it meant waiting to get this right, to get the design that's palatable to the residents, and best for the campus, and you missed a window, there's gotta be other windows for tax credits, as these things get built over and over again throughout the country and throughout Illinois. Lastly, onto the soil spoil pile. As I, as I reflected on the intent of the pile back in the early 90s, when the campus was constructed, it was left in place so as to insulate and prevent nearby residents from viewing the rear end of a campus that on original design was gonna be less attractive than it ended up being. However, now, we're talking about lowering it marginally and placing on top of it a soils field. So wouldn't it be ironic if the very thing that was initially conceived to protect and insulate the residents from an unsightly view, actually served to highlight, emphasize, and dominate those views for these residents into perpetuity? So I believe that a reevaluation of removing the pile fully, or consideration of another location on campus is warranted, and realize there's a cost implication to that, but I think that that needs to be factored into a decision of ultimately where this goes, or how much of the pile is removed. I looked up the county budget this morning, and found 588 pages that you carefully and thoughtfully worked on to, for approval for this year. But in summary, I think your overall budget for 2021 is 303 million, 32 million, of which comes from property taxes, we probably represent about 4% of, of that revenue for you. Commodities, I think, which is where electricity is, represents about 4% of the overall expenses, and the savings here of 198,000 a year is a sliver of that, under 2%, or 0.0065% of the overall budget. Just some things to think about, and again, thank you for the time and the opportunity.
Thank you, Mr. Mead. The next thing on our agenda is recycling solid waste. Jennifer Jarland is on-
Hi.
Hi, Jennifer.
Hi. So we have before you today a resolution for the contract to provide household curbside recycling trash and organics collection in the Mill Creek Special Service Area. We did solicit bids, and those came in, and then we issued a set of clarification questions to all bidders, of which there were four, to try to reach an apples-to-apples determination, filling in the giant spreadsheet of the various services that could be provided, above and beyond just picking up the one, two, or three bins from the curb, but also electronics recycling, also can food scrap be included in the organics, those kinds of questions, what are the prices for white goods, what are the prices for bulk items? And we, we did an analysis of that. The clarification questions did result in a pricing change for one of the service providers. And so, and this was in partnership with purchasing, of course, this whole process, and my boss, Director Jody Walnick. And so I wanted to just be transparent about the fact that the original offers that came in, and the bid tabulation that was originally done on the day of opening, it did change as a result of the clarification questions, which were, again, equally distributed to all of the offers, and then they came back with their responses. And a couple of the clarifications did say, so just to clarify this point of confusion for some of you, on, and it was mainly on the, there are three different levels, I don't know how much detail to go into here, too much, but there are three different levels, and the third level is an all-inclusive three bin pricing, but if there's something outside of the cart, it would have a sticker on it. Like if you have an extra bag of garbage that just won't fit in the cart, and you have to set it next to it, then you have to attach one of the stickers that you buy at the grocery store. That was the point for clarification. And with that, it did change one of the offer's pricing, and it flipped the lowest bidder. So just to be transparent, that happened. What we've done, and what I've been tasked with as the recycling coordinator in, in respect to this contract, is I, we seek to secure the best suite of services for the residents at the lowest cost possible. And after our final determinations and this giant spreadsheet that we've created to compare everything, apples-to-apples, it showed Lake Shore as the lowest bidder with the highest level of services, including the free electronics collection at the curb twice a year, as an event that they would run through and pick up people's electronics for free, including up to one television, and then also continue free electronics recycling at the new Elburn Electronics Waste Center. So that also is a huge added service. And in the end, the pricing, and excuse me while I toggle to another screen, I don't think I can share the screen, but just so that I can state the, one moment. I'm sorry, I have too many windows open, one moment. Well, I apologize. I can't get to the screen I'm looking for. Here it is. Okay. So in the end, the ratings of who was the, the lowest bidder, it was clearly Lake Shore, substantially. Definitely Flood Brothers was the second lowest cost. Here it is. So the, the residents with this service that we're proposing with Lake Shore will actually save money, they're going to have a substantial reduction in the cost of their current service because the, the bids came in lower. So I also wanted to note that, that people with the two cart level will save $6.70 a month, and the three cart people will save $4 a month. So that's, that's wonderful, that we're actually saving money and increasing services. And so in conversation with Maria and Jody, we stand by our recommendation, though yesterday we did receive an email from Flood Brothers asking questions of why the pricing had changed, and they did challenge us to say, why did the pricing change when we weren't given an option to change our pricing? But in fact, they were. It was written very clearly in the eight clarification questions, and that if any of this changes your pricing, please provide a revised pricing grid. So all the bidders were offered the same opportunity to reassess that and make sure they were giving us their best offer, and that's, that's how it came down. So we stand by our recommendation to contract with Lake Shore for five years to provide service in the Mill Creek Service Area, and there is a resolution before you today of that nature.
Thank you, Jody. Jen, so the resolution reads authorizing, let's see, Blair, can you bring up the resolution, So the resolution is authorizing refuse and recycling services for the Mill Creek Special Service Area, and this does not specify which carrier we're using, so is that sufficient?
It does, here, Lake Shore.
Okay, whereas Lake Shore, okay, great, thank you, Jen, Ms. Jarland. May I have a motion, then, to-
Bozniaki moves.
Bozniaki moves.
Alan's second.
Jeffon's second. Is there any more discussion? Please call the role.
Alan?
Alan.
Kayaus?
Kayaus, yes.
Molina?
Molina, yes.
Strathman?
Strathman, yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
Bozniaki?
Yes.
Bates?
Yes. Thank you very much. Thank you, Ms. Jarland.
Thank you.
Madam Chairman, this is Alan.
Yes, Ms. Alan.
Thank you for allowing me to speak, I didn't get in quickly enough to say, wait, discussion, discussion. I just, I just wanted to remind everyone, and, and for our recording in, into perpetuity as well, that the Mill Creek Service Area is covered by their own homeowners association, but we have oversight. So when they need things done for their properties, it, the, the treasury from which those things are paid is their own association dues. So these, all of these fees are coming right out of their own money, and particularly residents, but if there were anything having to do with the association, it would come out of the association treasury, so it's not, it's not the county's general fund. And again, our, because the county has oversight, the, these folks are lucky enough to have engineer Jody Walnick, and recycling coordinator Jennifer Jarland, and the services that Ivy Clea also provides, and the rest of staff, working for them because they are under the county's umbrella, and we have these very talented people and hardworking people working for us and for them. So Jennifer, thanks for doing such, such in-the-weeds work to make sure that they're getting the best deal, so that we protect them as well as the rest of the county. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Alan.
Absolutely, thank you.
I would like to move on to the next item, about a solar power purchase agreement project at King County Judicial Center. Because this is a somewhat complicated presentation with lots of fine print, in spite of using a little bit of extra paper, I asked Ivy to have hard copies for everybody for this presentation. Does everybody have a copy? Who'd like one? Would you like to give, do we have extras? Would anybody in the audience like a copy of the presentation? Everybody up, up front and close has a copy? Okay, Ms. Clea will now present the solar power purchase agreement and land lease for King County Judicial Center. I'm just gonna say one more thing, and that's that we have worked very hard to answer all the questions that came up at the last E and E committee meeting. I called every one of the board members to, and Madam Chair, to make sure that we weren't leaving out any of the questions that needed addressing. So I hope we've done a good job with that. I know my staff has worked all weekend to make this happen. So go ahead, Ivy, please.
Thank you, Ms. Bates. So thank you for having me today. I know this is a special E and E meeting to cover this presentation and get any last-minute questions answered regarding the PPA and land lease, as well as go into more detail regarding the landscaping plan and some of the outreach that we have been doing with the residents of Prairie Ridge Subdivision. So our hope today is to communicate a more thorough and clear project outline, so that the resolution for this project can be confidently reviewed during executive committee next week. Please feel free to interject and ask questions during the presentation. Before I get started, I just want to introduce a few of the members of our project team who will be helping me in the presentation today. We have Arnie Schrammel in the audience, who is the managing partner of Progressive Energy Group. Arnie has been acting as our consultant and liaison between the solar vendor and ourselves to help with this project. We have Eric Peterman, the CEO of GRNE Solar, he's online to help answer any questions. And we also have Patty King, Senior Landscape Architect at White &amp; Company. Patty has been assisting us with creating a landscaping plan for this project. All right, I will get started. So the first slide we have, I wanted to talk a little bit about why we're bringing this project to King County Board at the current moment. So we're looking at pursuing solar right now, because King County is trying to capture the maximum economic value from solar. The two largest drives are the federal tax credit and the Illinois Power Agency's IPA solar renewable energy credit, so SREC is an acronym that we've been using. So in, in the federal tax credit, the federal solar tax credit history, in the tax years of 2016 to 2019, the tax credit was 30% of the solar project's investment. And then in tax years 2020 to 2022, the tax credit is, was lowered to 26%. So that's where we're currently at with the federal solar tax credit. And then the county is aiming for 2022 for this solar project in order to get that maximum tax credit that is available right now. This is dependent on the IPA authorizing the Clean Energy Bill, which we have heard recently is moving along a little bit more so from the last time that we've been speaking about it. And then in tax years 2023, the tax credit is projected to be 22%. So this is a backup plan, but ideally, we are authorized in Block 5. So the, the Illinois Power Agency's SREC price, originally in Block 1, which was the authorization of the first block of funding for these solar projects, the first initial price was $44.64. That has been lowered with each additional block that has been approved. So the funding does decrease over time, and currently, we are in Block 5. So we're waiting for Block 5 funding to be approved. Ideally, that is approved when the Clean Energy Bill at the governor's office passes. So the current SREC price for Block 5 is $37.91. This is the block that we're aiming for. Currently, there are 566 pending applications that represent 31.7 megawatts of solar. So the estimation is that the waitlist is currently 80 to 90% full, which is why we're trying to get this project on the waitlist right now. And we don't know what the next block of funding, when that will be in, when that will be authorized. If the IPA Block 5 fills before King County's application is accepted, this will most likely move the project back to 2023. This will lower the federal tax credit to 22%, and most likely IPA SREC rebate will also decline 4% to 6%. So this would lower the county's annual energy savings from 200,000 to approximately 165,000 a year. So this is, this is why we're bringing this project to the board now. And the next slide, are there any questions on this slide before I continue?
Mr. Leonard, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just have one question, and that's with respect to the federal solar tax credit, is that a charge that is on the energy bill currently, where we'll be receiving that additional discount, or where do we get that from?
Arnie, do you want to answer that question, please?
Yeah, hello, this is Arnie Schrammel from Progressive Energy Group. The tax credit is actually captured by GRNE Solar, they're gonna actually own the system. So they're gonna probably spend $5 million building the system, and then they'll get a tax credit for 26% of that $5 million. So that's baked into the PPA- So that's baked into the PPA price. The current three and a half cents PPA price is assuming they get a 26% tax credit. If that answers a question.
Kind of, sort of. Not really, I mean, are you saying that the county won't receive that credit, but the solar company will?
Correct, since the county doesn't pay any income tax, that's why they're, for nonprofits and government agencies that don't pay income tax, it's best to bring a third party, and they have tax-attributed investors who actually have tax liabilities, so they can take advantage of those tax credits. Unfortunately, the, the tax credit is if you don't pay income tax, you can't capture it. It's not like a non-refundable rebate.
So with respect to the pricing of this project, you're counting on getting a 26% federal tax credit, is that correct?
Correct, not directly, but it's baked into the net price. So, you know, it's a $5 million project. The county, over 25 years, would only be paying, I think it's right around, I think I wrote that down, $3.2 million. And actually, would, would be what the county would pay over 25 years to capture the 92 million kilowatt hours, would only be paying 3.2 million. And the reason the county's only paying 3.2 and project costs 5 is because GRNE is capturing the tax credits in the Illinois Power Authority SREC value.
And the 3.2 million that we will be paying, how much will we get back in energy savings over that 25-year period?
That's in the next slide, if that's okay with you.
Sorry, didn't mean to get at it.
You've got lots of good questions, hopefully you've got lots of good answers.
But Madam Chair first.
Oh, Madam Chair, please.
Thank you. Ivy, you mentioned if the Clean Energy Bill does not pass, is that reflective of getting the discounted rate of, or the, the application of the $37.91? So if that Clean Energy Bill does not pass, where do we stand with that?
So in, in, Arnie and Eric can probably speak a little bit more clearly to this, but if the Clean Energy Bill does not pass, there won't be federal funding incentives for the solar company to be able to make the same amount of revenue on the project that they would if it were available?
That's that 26% that we just talked about, referenced?
No.
The, the-
It's the SREC.
So that would be the, the $37.91?
Because the energy bill we're talking about is in Illinois today.
Yes. It's an Illinois bill. So if it doesn't pass, or it gets delayed, pushed back till next year, what happens to that $37.91?
Goes down 4% to 6%.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear.
I think it goes down 4% to 6%, didn't you say?
Yes, and we don't know when the next block of funding will be approved for that. Arnie, is there anything else?
Yeah, the IPA has actually spoke to this point. They're gonna keep that $37.91 till that Block 5 is full. They're asking the solar developers and the customers to continue to apply, to fill up that block, because we're getting a little bit in the weeds now. There is a bunch of money sitting out there, there's actually over $400 million sitting in the fund that we've all paid in. Everybody who pays a ComEd bill has been paying into this fund. So the money's there, but they need authorization from the legislature to make this plan go forward. So that part is pretty secure. It's just a matter of when they pass the bill, which hopefully is in the next couple of days, but could drag out to the end of the year. The bigger worry I have is if that block gets filled before the county gets in, then you'll pop to the next block, which they're announcing, you know, the, the blocks, they don't have the exact, but it's gonna lower 4% to 6% per block as these blocks fill up.
And the bill is still being negotiated.
Yeah, it passed out of the Senate last night, but it's now gotta go through the House and the governor.
And, and this bill is the one that would release the $400 million for more SRECs. Otherwise, we'll lose access to SRECs for, we don't know how long. So that's part of the immediacy of trying to do this, this, this year, this month. Barb?
Thank you, Madam Chair. The 566 pending applications, how many are awarded out of the 566? Do we know that?
Well, none of them are actually awarded yet, pending the bill. But the vast majority, those probably high 90s, will be accepted. Because in order to apply to the Illinois Power Authority, you have to have interconnect agreements, you have to have control of the property, you have to have a feasible project, they just don't let anybody apply. So before you even apply, you have to have a lot of this documentation in place.
So it's 566 pending throughout the state of Illinois?
In the ComEd zone.
In the ComEd zone, okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schrammel. Any more questions about this slide? Who said that?
Sheprow?
Sheprow.
Okay, Mr., oh, Mr. Sheprow, please.
So I just want to make sure I understood the answer to the last question.
A little bit, Mr. Sheprow.
Oh, uh, sorry, let's see, I don't know if the volume, can you hear me better?
Yes, that's better.
All right, I just wanted to, so the, what we're saying is, is that most of the 566 will qualify for an award.
Yes.
And how many, we said it's, the block is 90% full. How many more applications would it take to fill that up?
Okay, doing the math, I would say about 50. 50 to 70, Mr. Leonard says 75, I said 50, doing the math in our heads.
Okay, otherwise, this slide is helpful, thank you.
Okay, good, good.
All right, thank you. I'm gonna move on to the annual electric cost for the judicial and adult justice facilities. So this slide is to break down the electric usage as well as the costs, and then look at directly what would be the savings with this project and how that will work. So if you look to the right-hand side without solar, that's where we currently are at. So we use yearly 8.7 million kilowatt hours, and our energy cost is $211,000, right around there. Our transmission fees are $194, almost $195,000. And then our utility and taxes come in at around $200,000. So annually, on the judicial and adult justice facilities, we spend $611,000 just on our electric utilities. So with solar, we would still have the same yearly electric usage. We would have an energy cost of $244,000. So we would be, the way, the way that that would work is we pay GRNE on a monthly basis to purchase energy directly from them. So we would be purchasing the energy from the solar array as opposed to purchasing it from ComEd. And then our transmission fees would be lower to $14,000. Utility and tax fees would be lower to $154,000, coming in at an annual cost of $413,000. So the savings would be right around $200,000 annually implementing this project. And we did also look at, so current, the, the without solar prices are based on the current Constellation Energy Contract that expires in December of 2022.
Ms. Walnick, is there anything you'd like to add about the, the future of these bills, or at this time, or not?
Yeah, certainly.
Mike, please.
Yeah, there's one.
Wait, fix it.
Sorry about that. And Chris Allen is here and can speak to that as well. As we did the, the electric aggregation program, as well as the updates we're getting from Arnie Schrammel, as well as Chris Allen, is that the energy prices continue to increase. We did use our Constellation contract value, which is very, very low right now. And so our expectation is that our savings through this project will actually increase because of the fact that when we renew that Constellation Energy Contract in December of 2022, we fully expect that the rates will go up.
Thank you, making this even more valuable in terms of savings to the county. Okay.
Are there any questions?
Madam Chair.
Madam Chair. I just have, I'd like some clarification on this. So when we negotiate with Constellation, if that's our service provider for the aggregation, and we remove the Judicial Center and Adult Justice Facilities from that negotiation, from what I'm hearing is that our rates will continue to be as low as, if not lower than, if we were to have previously have included the Judicial and Adult Justice Facilities. And, and then I'm sure that the multi-purpose building will be on this grid as well, is that correct? Because I, I don't see that here.
The multi-purpose building meter will not be connected to the solar project. The solar project itself is only supplying about 44% of the power for the Judicial Center and the Adult Justice Center. So we're utilizing 100% of the solar power for those three meters that are, there's two meters in the jail, and then there's a single meter at the Judicial Center.
We don't go to the multi-use facility because we'd have to cross the gas, NiCar gas property.
And we're already using 100% of the power we can generate off the solar field, so there was, there'd be no purpose to attach the multi-use building to it.
And will that multi-use building then be part of the conversation about the aggregation rather than standing on its own?
That is correct. Our rate at the multi-use building is, I believe, over double the rate that we have through our Constellation Energy Contract because they are paying directly to ComEd. So we will incorporate that along with our RFP that goes out for that electric aggregation prior to December of 2022.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Kaya?
Yeah, Kaya, yeah, just so that I am understanding this table, we actually, most of the savings come from the transmission fees, is that correct? And the taxes, we're actually paying slightly higher for the energy, so just wanted to-
Yes.
Yes.
It's amazing how much we save in transmission.
So the savings comes from the transmission and utility tax.
A lot of it comes from transmission, correct.
Thank you.
Anybody? Cle?
All right, I'll continue.
I got one, I'm sorry.
Okay, sure, Mr. Sheprow, please.
So does this slide, the one with the comparison, does that take into account, well, you and I talked about yesterday, which is that the solar system will degrade at a couple of percent a year and have to be replaced with presumably ComEd's power. Now it would seem to be at least somewhat of an offset to the savings. Do we have any idea what that estimate is?
Is that among of your slides, in the future slides?
I don't fully believe so, but Arnie can answer that question.
Arnie, please.
Yeah, we, we didn't put a slide in here, but the, in the first year, we expect the solar panels to degrade 2%. So roughly, the savings in year two would be 2% less. And then each year after that, the expected solar degradation should be 8/10 of 1%. So roughly, the savings will go down each year 8/10 of 1% from years three to 25. We can create a spreadsheet to show you those exact numbers, but we don't have that today for the presentation.
So, I, I'm not good at math, and I was told there'd be no math on this exam. But the, so roughly, by the end of 25 years, you would expect roughly a 25 or 30% decline in the power by the end of the term.
Correct.
Eric, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, just a quick question. Because we live in the Midwest and we can have pretty severe winters, do they take into consideration winters with heavy snow and ice storms? That it may make a difference on, you know, collecting the sun, sun's rays, solar power?
Yeah, I mean, this last winter was a good example. So personally, I have solar on our office building at my house. In February, I had almost, I mean, less than 100 kilowatt hours production on my system this February because they were covered with snow and ice. So that's a little bit unusual, we don't expect that every year. Most of the time, the snow and ice melts off after a few days. But this past February, the solar production was way down. And you would expect to see that every three to five years, I would anticipate. But when they do these projections, they're taking in good years and bad years.
Okay. Yeah, I know we had an issue with, I think, our animal control facility one month, or, I remember reading that a little bit ago, yeah.
Yes, yeah, there was a decrease in the solar production during the winter months.
So their electric bills went way up.
Yeah.
And I'm sure Brown with a question.
Mr. Brown, uh, Ms. Walnick, is that, yeah, you're done? Mr. Brown, please.
All right, thank you, Madam Chair. Question on the utility and taxes, that line item there. Could you explain, or could somebody explain what that is, those taxes? You know, where are they, what's being taxed, and where is that tax revenue going to? My question, I guess, is, is the county indirectly a beneficiary of those taxes that are being paid for utility costs? So are we gonna not indeed really recoup that kind of savings on that line item?
The county, the county has no utility tax that the county receives. The big chunk of that is the state, the utility tax, and that's a per KW charge. But the other four big items in that bucket are, there's a, what I call the nuclear bailout fee. It's money going directly to the Exelon power plants. Two, there's an energy efficiency charge, that's a per KWH charge. Three is there's renewable portfolio charge, which is actually the money that goes to the IPA to pay for solar projects and wind projects. And the last one is an environmental fee, and those are all per kilowatt hour charges. And when you have solar like this, it's behind the meter. So since that power isn't coming from the grid, you don't have to pay taxes on the amount you're getting from the solar production.
Understood, thank you.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
I have a ComEd bill right here. And in this section, where it says taxes and others, so you can look on your own bill, this is where it lists environmental cost recovery, renewable portfolio standard, that pays for the SREC, zero emission standard, that pays the Exelon's bailout. And then the last one is energy efficiency programs, that pays for things like low, low-income households to put insulation in their attics, among other things. So you can look on your bill and see that this is the part that we won't be paying anymore because we're not going out to ComEd for that amount of electricity.
Okay, thank you.
That's my show and tell.
Excuse me, I have one more question, if I may.
Yes, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Regarding the electric cost, with the energy costs in total, all in, from what I just heard, that there may be an 8% annual reduction after several years of decrease of energy because of the solar field, is that correct? Responsiveness of the, of the panels. Then, on top of that, we talked about bad weather, and climate change is apparent upon us. So there may be more severe ice storms rather than heavy snow. That, that may be our new reality, we've had milder winters, and I don't remember having a significant snowstorm, lots of ice. We've had milder winters, and I don't remember having a significant snowstorm, lots of ice now, but not significant snow. And if we're looking at ice on the, on the field, that would decrease the solar energy into the, into the, into the power source, into the grid, and increase our energy costs for ComEd. So it would go like this. What I'm getting at, with all of this factored in, has all of that been averaged in into this annual cost of $413,000? All those factors, just curious.
No, these were based on average years. So if we have big change in the weather, either good or bad, the savings could either increase or decrease. This is just on an average year.
Historical?
Historical average.
From the past.
Right.
Okay. And does that include, did you factor in last year? Because that may become, at least for the next five to ten years, our new normal.
Yeah, it was factored in, but it was a twenty-year average, so it's only gonna, you know, factor in five percent in the whole equation.
So then this savings actually may not be as significant, it would vary, should I say, it would vary.
Yeah, it's, you know, it's a long-term contract, so there's a lot of variables that could make the savings go higher, could go lower. There's a good argument that prices will be higher in ten years, so the savings will be more. But what we just did is we took your current Constellation contract, the current projected sun hours over the last twenty-year average, and that's how the calculation was determined. To the extent those things changed slightly, I mean, to me, I look at, the savings are pretty big for this kind of solar field. It might be a little bit more, it might be a little bit less, but we're not talking factors. It's not like it's gonna decrease.
Okay, and I'm not, I'm just trying to just have, be realistic about our numbers of savings.
And we just note, too, that the solar production in the summer is significantly higher than in the winter. Our ComEd bills out there at the Judicial Center and at the jail are about a third in the winter than they are in the summer when the air conditioning is running. So during those time periods when we have snow or ice on the panels, our bills are also very low even today.
Okay, okay.
Well, thank you.
Thank you for that clarification.
Mr. Kias.
Yes, Kias, just from my history, having the solar roof, and this, maybe the scientist in me, that must make us understand it as completely as possible, is that in February, mine was half of what it normally was like the year before, the energy. But normally in February, I only get two hundred kilowatts anyway. So even though it was cut in half, it's way outweighed by the eight hundred that I get in this month, last seven hundred I got the month before, during the summertime when the sun is really shining. Wintertime does not produce that much energy anyway, so half of that is really nominal compared to the rest of the year.
Also, Eric Peterman is on the line. He's gonna jump in and explain the eighty-five percent guarantee. Eric, do you want to touch on that really quickly?
Sure, thanks, Ivy. Yeah, I think one thing to note on this topic as well is that the county has asked for an eighty-five percent performance guarantee for the estimated production of the solar system, and GRNE Solar has been amenable to that, so that has actually been built into the contract that there is a guarantee of at least eighty-five percent. Anything that goes below that would then be compensated back from GRNE Solar to the county. I just want to make sure that that was mentioned during this topic as well.
Thank you, Eric, and I'm gonna touch on that a little bit later in my slides as well.
May we move on? Okay, thank you.
All right, great. So the next couple of slides, I'm just gonna go over some of the power purchase agreement sections. So first, we have the termination of the agreement. So just some points to note, either party can terminate the agreement without penalty if costs increase, if energy credits are not available, or if GRNE is not able to obtain an interconnect agreement. So the interconnect agreement would be that connection to the ComEd grid. So if we're unable to obtain that for some reason, either party can terminate the agreement. The county can also terminate the agreement if the rate increases by zero point zero zero seven, so I believe that's seven tenths of a cent, correct, per kilowatt hour, and the county deems the project to be no longer in the county's best interest or economically favorable. The county can terminate the agreement if the final design of the system, for some reason, will generate less than 1.5 megawatts. The system is built to be a two-megawatt system and proposed at that as of right now. Either party can terminate if prevented by force majeure from carrying out obligations of the power purchase agreement.
Any questions about termination of the agreement? Mr. Shepper? Nope, okay.
Okay. All right, so up next we have.
Question, Kope, question, Kope, I'm sorry.
Okay, you fooled me. Okay, Mr. Kope.
Hi, thank you. In the event that there's a panel meltdown and the production falls on its face and our light moves, whatever.
Please come closer to your mic, Mr. Kope. We're having a little trouble understanding you, or speak louder.
All right, how's this? How's this better?
Much better, much better.
Thank you, I'm sorry about that. In the event that there's an act, in the event that there's an act of God and panel melts down and so on and so forth, and, and this is six, eight years down the road, and the cost of panels have gone up, and, and you, and the supplier, the contractor decides, well, we don't want to spend that kind of money to, to repair the system, and we're going to opt out. Is that, is that, is that a, is that a worry? Is that something they're concerned about? Shall there be a mechanism to, to prevent that type of a scenario from happening?
Thank you, Mr. Kope. There is a clause in the power purchase agreement, who would like?
I can speak to that. There, the GRNE is required to hold insurance on the field for the full replacement cost of the field. In the power purchase agreement, there's specific terms if they do choose not to rebuild the system. If there's a complete system loss, that would be a hundred percent of the panels are damaged, the county would be paid a termination fee, and that fee would be equivalent to our loss of savings over the extension of the contract to that twenty-five years.
Excellent, good thinking, thank you.
So we get reimbursed for our loss, and we're all very sad that our panels got destroyed. Any other questions about the termination of the agreement?
Yeah, Dr. Shepper?
Okay, Mr. Shepper?
The, the payment that would be made, to make, basically, that would be the savings, would that be covered by the insurance policy as well, or do we have to look to the creditworthiness of the developer at that point?
Arnie, please, or Jody?
It would, I guess, Eric can jump in here, but the full replacement cost of the system would then fund the termination fee that's paid back to the county.
Probably from the, from the insurance, Eric?
Yes, that's correct, Jody.
Okay.
That seems a little odd. I mean, if the, I, I don't know that, well, I guess I'd like to see what the policy would look like. Normally, an insurance company doesn't insure against a, you know, future unknown, like lost savings. I could see that it would replace the system, but I guess we just have to see what, what the policy would say.
Thank you, Mr. Shepper. Ivy?
That actually is on our next slide, the replacement value insurance.
Okay, good.
So the, the system operation points of the power purchase agreement, like we talked about before, GRNE guarantees the eighty-five percent of projected system output as determined by the final design. If there is a shortfall in the output, GRNE will compensate the county for shortfall based on the actual build amount and savings that would have been realized. GRNE is responsible for all of the maintenance of the system. GRNE is responsible for the metering device and the auditing of said device. And GRNE bears all responsibility of system loss. So if total system loss, the power purchase agreement can be terminated by GRNE immediately, with GRNE responsible for removing the system from the site and payment to the county of lost savings. If not a total loss, GRNE will replace and repair the system within a hundred and eighty days with insurance proceeds. They are required to have replacement value insurance. So hopefully, that answers the question a little bit more thoroughly.
I'm not sure it does, because replacement value is replacement of the system, not payment of any future monies that we would save. I don't see that covered by this.
Okay, we'll look into that.
Are there any other questions on this slide? All right. The next slide is covering default, including bankruptcy. The county can require GRNE to remove the system at its sole cost. The county can purchase the system and continue to operate it if it chooses. If the county defaults, GRNE can require the county to pay for the removal of the system and termination fee for lost revenue. If GRNE abandons the system for a continuous twelve-month period after notification, the county can take full ownership of the system and financial detail provided in the next slide if the county were to elect to remove the system instead of continuing to operate it.
Any questions, or should we look at the next slide?
Shepper, question.
Mr. Martin, please.
Am I correct, when I look at overall on the finances here, and our security, is ultimately the fact that we owe a substantial fee every year becomes a substantial element of de facto protection, whether or not there's insurance or otherwise? If we're shorted, then we don't pay our fee. Am I, am I?
If, would you just repeat that?
If we have an economic issue, we have fees that are due every year. And, and, and so if, if in fact, we have a problem, then we have set-off rights, and we claim set-off rights, and that would become
Yes.
a de facto element of our protection under this contract. And the way the contract is written, as I understand it, is that, that those rights, which would understandably diminish, that power would diminish as near the end of a contract because we owe less money, but we have an obligation here that within twenty-four months prior to the conclusion, they have to show proof that in fact they have the money to decommission and move forward.
Yes.
So, so
Or we withhold.
As appropriate as all these provisions are, the bottom line is, is that if the worst-case scenario develops, we just simply don't pay our fee until the matter is resolved.
I believe that's an option.
Yeah, I mean, I'm just, I think that clears up a lot of the unknowns.
Okay, yes.
Because as long as we owe money, that, that set-off
They're in control of that.
legitimate protection.
Thank you.
But Shepper, I, but if we don't pay them, do we, how do we get the power?
Arnie, please, Mr. Schrammel? If we don't pay them, how do we get the power?
Can you have Eric Peterman answer that?
Eric, would you like to answer that, please?
Yeah, just to make sure I understand the question. So if, if the county doesn't pay the bill, the power's still being generated from the field, and you're seeing the benefit from your reduced ComEd and Constellation bill, so the power would still physically flow, whether the bill was paid or not. I'm not sure if that was the direct question.
I guess that is the question. And of course, if there's a bankruptcy, then the bankruptcy court is gonna tell us what we can do, regardless of what the contract says.
The solar panels are the workhorses, they keep producing energy
Yeah.
while we're, while we're, while the lawyers are doing their work.
That's correct.
Well, that, all right, we're not gonna get into a discussion of bankruptcy law, because, all right, so distraction, all right, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shepper. Any more questions? Mr. Leonard?
Thank you, Madam Chair. You know, I think what Mr. Martin had pointed out was a very valid point, that twenty-four months before the termination or end of the twenty-five-year agreement, if they can't prove they have the ability to remove the information, the materials, then we can take it into our own hands. With respect to the energy still being created by the solar panels, I don't think there's any guarantee, that I read, that they will continue to supply us during that twenty-four month period if in fact they can't afford to remove the equipment. And worst-case scenario, we'd have to go back to ComEd for the last twenty-four months.
Ms. Will Nick?
As Eric mentioned, the power keeps flowing, we're interconnected with the solar field, so as long as it's sunny, the power is coming to us. They won't, they can't come out and flip a switch that they control and turn off the power. The power will continue to be generated and will continue to come to, come to us. And if GRNE is not financially able to decommission the system, we have sufficient revenue that we would have been paying them on a monthly basis to decommission it ourselves or to continue to operate it ourselves.
So in other words, Jody, you're saying that we will continue to get the power from the solar panels, even if they default in their ability to decommission the equipment?
Correct.
Good, perfect, thank you.
Well, that, Shepper, then I guess that raises another question in my mind, which is
Would you like to speak?
Yes, I would, sorry. I, why would we, if it's still generating power in the last two years, why would we want to stop getting it? Because the savings presumably would continue past the twenty-five years.
Yes, we want to continue getting it. The question was, could they turn it off? And the answer is no.
Okay, but it's a twenty-five-year agreement, right? And at the end of the twenty-five years, they're obligated to remove it?
Or we can renew, or we can purchase.
Okay.
It's in the power purchase agreement. Decommissioning, please, Ms. Free, okay?
All right. All right, the next slide is covering decommissioning. So GRNE shall remove the system within a hundred and eighty days following the end of the twenty-five years. GRNE must restore the site of any damage. GRNE must show sufficient financial ability prior to the end of term, or the county may stop making payments and use those funds to remove the system. There are sufficient savings that the county is assured funding for decommissioning. I have another slide following this one for more detail on that. And the county may choose to purchase the system at the end of the twenty-five years, subject to appraisal.
Kope, please.
Mr. Kope, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Back on that last point in regards to interruption of electric flow, in the event of the financial crisis of sorts, there is a maintenance aspect, so that, that the, the electric could actually be interrupted through, through some, some maintenance scenario or lack thereof. And so I just wanted to throw a fly in the ointment, I'm sorry.
Yes, you're right, and GRNE is responsible for all maintenance, so. Okay, is there any, who's got a hand up? Anybody?
I was just gonna add that, as we discussed prior, the maintenance on these type of systems is very low. They are systems that track with the sun, and the motors on those systems could potentially stop working at twenty-five, twenty-six years. And so if we were, if GRNE, for some reason, were to not, not continue maintenance, that that the maintenance is a very low cost compared to our savings. And so if we chose to purchase the system, we could definitely have a vendor maintain the system for us to ensure its full potential.
Thank you. Moving along, please. Okay, Ms. Ivy, Ms. Cle.
So the next slide is further going into detail on the removal of the system at the end of term. So no fewer than 24 months prior to the end of term or within 10 business days of termination of this agreement. In accordance with Section 9.4, the seller shall provide reasonable evidence that the seller has sufficient financial resources to remove the system as required by the agreement. If the seller does not provide such evidence, buyer shall have the right to cease making payments to the seller, otherwise required by this agreement, and those funds, and use those funds to pay for removal of the system. The cost to remove, the cost of such removal shall be deducted from amounts otherwise due to the seller or added to amounts otherwise due from the seller as appropriate. So just a comparison on contract terms of other local government solar sites. Kendall County's time to end of term is 180 days, as is Fox Metro Water Reclamation District. Fox Valley Park District is also 180 days. And the city of Plano, Illinois is 24 months. And our proposed solar site is, the time to end of term is also 24 months. So the 24-month value of withholding payments would be $280,000 in 2045. The present value in 2022 would be $155,000 using a 2.75 inflation rate. And the estimated net cost to remove the field is between $35,000 and $50,000 after reimbursement for recycled steel, copper inverters and panels.
Any questions about that? Okay, thank you.
All right, and moving along to the land lease agreement. The land lease was also included in the agenda packet. The lease allows reasonable access to the site by GRNE. The lease is for 25 years and can be terminated by either party. If the power purchase agreement is terminated, GRNE will remove the equipment from the site within 180 days of expiration or termination of the lease at their expense. And GRNE shall restore the site to pre-construction conditions. If the county chooses to purchase the system under the requirements of the power purchase agreement, the lease will terminate once it is purchased. GRNE can terminate the lease if they are unable to get title insurance, obtain an interconnection, if there are unforeseen structural issues that increase the cost of the system, or if a Phase 1 environmental study shows environmental issues with the site. King County must retain title to the property. GRNE must perform all maintenance and work in accordance with local standards and permits. Maintenance of any pollinator plants desired by the county will be paid for by the county. And GRNE will not be responsible for damage to the plants. And the county shall not install plantings or other obstacles that would reduce the amount of sunlight to be received on the panels.
And Mr. Sheprow, you want to ask me if we get paid for this land lease? And the question, the answer is no, it's incorporated into the power purchase agreement. Mr. Leonard?
Thank you, Madam Chair. On Mr. Sheprow's point about the land lease agreement and the payment on that. So that is included in the package where you're spending $5 million. We're paying you back $3.2 million over the 25-year period. And that $100,000 or $104,000 that I was quoted as a land lease is incorporated into that?
Arnie? It says that the, oh, the power purchase agreement is the consideration for the land lease. Arnie, do you want to elaborate on that?
Yeah, I'm, you know, I'm going to have to ask, the $104,000, I'm not familiar with that amount or where that came from. And once again, I was given that number by a couple of board members, so I don't know if that's accurate and accurate.
What was that, $104,000?
$104,000 was the annual amount we were going to get for leasing the land to the solar company for their use. Yeah, that, I don't know where that information came from, but when the staff was working on this with your procurement department and I was advising, the deal always was they're going to try to make all the savings in the PPA and the land lease would basically be zero. So there isn't a $200,000 energy savings plus a land lease. It's, there is no payment for land lease, if I can. So the $200,000, $198,000 year savings incorporates all of your cost in our savings. Correct. There's nothing additional beyond that. And that's first-year savings. As Mr. Sheprow said, those savings will actually decline slightly every year after that. Eight tenths of a percent after the first year. Two percent the first year and then eight tenths, one percent after that. Which will equate to about 20, 21% over the period of the lease. Okay, thank you.
Ms. Cle?
All right, so up next, we're going to be discussing the landscaping plan that we have been working on with White and Company. We have Patty King on the line. Patty, do you want to jump in and explain some of the following slides about the landscaping plan?
Of course, thank you for having me today. All right, so we were asked to help and provide some screening for the residents. We were looking at not only the existing conditions, but views from decks and what we feel like would be appropriate for the conditions that are there. One of our first thoughts was to adjust the length of the berm as it heads west on the north side of Richard Road, sorry, like I knew the name of that street. We do understand that there are some existing trees that are there, so the modifications to that berm may be minor, but it's something that we should at least take a look at. Part of what we're trying to do is accommodate a higher point to start the vegetation growth to help screen sooner rather than later. We certainly feel like we could add some evergreens. And you'll see these sections are very similar. We would anticipate evergreens being along the south side of the berm. We also felt like adding some trees on the south side of Richard Road would also help quicken the amount of screening that's available for the residents. I think, could we move to the next slide? We have three cross-sections.
Yep.
So we're moving towards the east. So you can see that we're trying to accommodate not only a visual screening, but we're also conscious of not shading out the solar panels once they're in place. So final plant selection still is pending. We certainly understand that the vegetation we've shown and the scale in these sections is exaggerated. The height is smaller scale than the width. So we do need to verify that the plants that are selected will not interfere with the functioning of the solar panels, not only from when it's installed, but later as the plant material starts to grow. Okay, and the next section, great. So this is the furthest section towards the east. And, you know, again, it's showing similar conditions. Let's move to the, I believe, the last exhibit.
Patty, this is, this is Jody. Could you explain a little bit as to the reasoning between the deciduous trees and the importance of them on the south side of Richard versus the evergreen trees that you proposed on the north side of Richard?
Sure. So the evergreen trees will certainly be a year-round screen. And we felt as though on the north side of Richard, that it would be important to have that screening all year round. The addition of the shade trees south of Richard gives some, essentially some immediate relief. That angle from a viewing standpoint will be, you know, the closer we can get the plant material to the residences, the faster that screening effect will take place. We could put evergreens on the south side as well. And that might be an option that we give to the residents to let them choose. But some of the initial planting and evergreen error, I'm sorry, and deciduous trees, we felt like would be more appropriate on the south side of Richard. There is also a bike, I believe, a bike path there as well. And we could, in fact, interplant those trees on the bike path. So we don't want to impede the bike path. I know that there were some comments about, there's currently pin oaks at the bike path itself, and there are some issues with acorns. Some of the items I've suggested, just because I love them, are oak trees. But we certainly could use another tree, we could use hackberry. You know, there's a lot of other options for native shade trees that would work well in this situation. So again, just want to remind you that final plant selection is pending. But that would be, you know, that was our thought process on why we might have evergreens on the north side of Richard on the berm and then some deciduous shade trees on the south side by the residences.
Ms. King, this is Mavis Babe. A question that came up at our Homeowners Association meeting, and I think you just answered this, but I'd like to have you answer it one more time. Is why put the trees on the south side of Richard, where it seems to a lot of people that the north side would be better?
Well, it's really just a geometry question. So, so the closer we have the trees to your residences, the sooner, even the smaller trees, will start to block that view because your view corridor expands farther away you get. We're just trying to, you know, we, as a landscape architect, I deal with living things from a design standpoint. In instances and projects like this, where you're trying to screen something more or less as fast as you can, there's not a lot of ways to do that. You can put in larger plant material, but that's more expensive. You can put in faster-growing plants, but sometimes the quality of those plants are not necessarily what we want long-term because you sacrifice some of that with the speed and growth rates. So the other option is to identify a better location. So that would provide the residents with a more immediate screening short-term. And then in the long-term, the evergreen trees will grow and create hopefully a solid mass mostly. And then those trees, you know, would remain the property of the King County, so they would be in charge of maintenance for those.
Thank you for explaining that. Geometry is a good answer.
Madam Chair, Strathman here.
Strathman, please.
Yes, I just have a question for Ms. King. My understanding is that spruce trees are not best for this zone, growing zone. I heard spruce trees mentioned by the neighbors that that might be one of the specimens that they would require. And I have heard that spruce trees are not best for our growing zone. Do you have any information on that?
We use spruce trees regularly in this area. So I've never had an issue. They are appropriate for this climate zone. So I would respectfully disagree with that statement.
Thank you. And you did mention native plantings.
Right.
Okay, great. May we move on?
Okay.
Oh, nope.
Thank you. Well, Nikki here, just a quick statement. When Mr. Cameron spoke, he talked about spruce trees. And I would kind of put evergreens in that same category, and there's several species. So if this project moves forward, that's something I think we should consider. They seem to be more happy with with probably the width and the growth of the evergreens more so than the oak trees. So, thank you.
Ms. Cle? All right.
All right, so this illustrates in plan views. So where we anticipate additional evergreen trees on the north side of Richard Road being installed. So they are the darker green circles that would infill in between the existing evergreens and other shade trees that are already there. And then south of Richard, we do the lighter lime green circles would be the shade trees. You know, we could include or not include those as residents choose. But that essentially illustrates what the sections show.
I would just add that the cost of the landscaping plan does include the heightening and lengthening of the south berm towards Peck Road. So it's the trees as well as the landscape berm.
That is correct.
Also, just quickly on the note of the budget, I can give a quick outline of all of the items that are part of that. We have the berm grading, the restoration. We do, there was the plan for the 12 shading trees and 20 evergreen trees. And then general conditions are all included in that estimated $50,000 budget.
This is a graphic showing a preliminary layout of the solar arrays. You know, this is not a final plan, so please take that into consideration. But we did want to identify exactly, potentially where the solar panels will go and the vegetation will provide adequate screening once it's allowed to grow mature.
Patty, could you address why the landscaping plan kind of ends on the east side of the project area, even though there's houses further to the east?
There is the berm that's immediately north of Richard, which I believe we call the south berm. That south berm actually grows in height as you move east. And there are existing trees and vegetation that is currently on that berm. So we felt as though the screening that was provided was adequate at this point in time to screen the future solar panels. We certainly can add trees along that berm as well if we need to infill. So that is not a problem. Again, we, you know, we look at this more as, you know, a preliminary plan. We've put some ideas together. We certainly need input from you and the rest of the board and the residents on it. So that's certainly something we can modify.
I would just note too, in that area on the east side of the project site, the north spoil pile berm also tapers out. So the ground where the panels are installed is actually quite a bit below the south berm.
And which end was that?
That's on the east end.
The east end, yeah, the cross-section confirms that.
Right.
Right, yes.
Yeah. Well, Nikki here, on that east end, I think there are trees there, but I think a lot of that brush is invasive brush. And once the cold weather comes, that will be gone, that will die and just turn brown. And so I think it'd be a great idea to extend extend your evergreens or spruce trees going east on the north side of Richard Road.
I'll make a note of that.
Okay, thank you for that comment.
The last exhibit we have are some photo realistic renderings. I believe Mr. Cameron, early on in our meeting today, had asked for some more realistic images of what views from the decks might look like. So as you can see in both of these, these are two different decks. We have We have added the solar panels based on the proposed lowering of that north berm. And we do have included them based on the actual height of those panels themselves. So I know you certainly will still see some of them based on the existing conditions, but the vegetation will most definitely help with screening.
Patty, just to jump in here. So this is actually the view of the same deck. So this is the Cameron's backyard. You guys created the image on the left for us. So the image on the left includes a 3D rendering, including the proposed landscaping when the trees are mature. And then the right-hand side image was actually created by our IT department as a 3D rendering of what the site would look like with the solar project on the, on the site, but without the landscaping. So that's the difference between the two.
Ms. Clea, thank you very much for that clarification.
Yeah. So hopefully you can kind of see the difference on the left-hand side image that the trees will make again. That's just kind of like an artist's rendering visual example.
I apologize for my poor explanation.
No, no problem. And we also have, this is a panoramic picture of the Cameron's backyard that our IT department created as well. Just another 3D rendering image. This does not include any of the landscaping that was just talked about and proposed. Does anyone have any questions for Patty before we move on with some other items in the presentation?
Sheprow, question.
Yes, Mr. Sheprow.
Yeah, help me with the distance. What is the actual distance from the balcony to the nearest solar array? How far away is it?
I think if we can go, I think these images.
One number was 300 feet.
Well, I, I, yes, I believe originally we looked at 250, 300, 300 feet from where the proposed start of the solar site is to the balcony of the homes.
So that includes the backyards, the bike path.
Yep.
Bridger Road.
And the, the south of the southern berm.
And the setback.
Yeah, 35 foot setback from the right away line.
It was about 300 feet, wasn't it, from the houses to the first solar panels?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Mr. Kaius.
Kaius, yeah, just a question on the pictures. I know the panels on my roof are completely black. They seem, and the panels that were displayed last night had a silver framework, which seems to make them more obvious from the viewpoint, well, anybody watching, and they're, they're is there a chance that they could be modified to or obtained with a black frame that would make them blend better?
Eric?
Yeah, sure. The, all black modules are typically used for residential installations on roofs. The silver frame with the blue solar cell is actually a little bit more efficient and those are used in commercial applications. So any large ground mounts or in commercial applications, you're going to have the silver frame with the blue cells.
And the blue cell in the, the upper picture, the two double picture looks almost gray or black. The one below looks bright blue. They will never look bright blue like that, will it?
No, it'll be a little bit more of a
A neutral?
Or darker color, right?
Yeah.
Thank you, Eric. Mr. Peterman? Any more questions on this slide? Okay, Ms. Clea?
All right. Thank you, Patty, for jumping in and explaining the landscaping plan. I'm just going to touch quickly on some of the outreach that we've been doing with the Prairie Ridge residents. So earlier last week, I had been discussing and received a memo from Prairie Ridge subdivision residents regarding a few formal conditions. And I know that John did go over those six requests today during his public comment. So in the memo that we received and that was sent out to all King County board members, there were three formal conditions that were being requested by the residents. This is just a paraphrased version of, of the request. So the existing berm be reduced in height prior to the construction of the solar field by 30 feet. So their first request was to take the berm down from 15 feet to 30 feet. The second request was any fencing needed should be along Bridger Road placed behind the existing landscaping berm at a level where the fence cannot be visible from the residential homes across the street and constructed of a material that is consistent with the decorative fencing in the area or on the digital campus and specifically not chain link or any industrial or commercial product. And the third request was that the county shall install and maintain dense landscaping along the north side of Bridger Road consisting of large, fast-growing evergreen or conifer trees spaced no more than 10 feet apart. And so that upon five years' growth, the views of the solar panels from residents across Bridger Road shall, shall be eliminated or almost eliminated. Patty, if you want to speak quickly just to that, no more than 10 feet apart. And then I, I think also touching upon the last request item, the idea with the landscaping plan is to soften the view of the solar panels across the street. The, the point on elimination or almost elimination, I don't believe, you know, we're, we're trying to offer screening of the project site. So Patty, go ahead with the, that 10 feet apart suggestion.
Of course. So the spacing would definitely be determined based on the actual species of plant that was selected. So the, like a Colorado spruce, a blue spruce would generally grow to about 25 feet wide. If we put them at 10 feet on center, we would drastically reduce the overall with and the health of the plant long term. So part of what as a landscape architect I do is make sure that the, that the plant material we utilize is spaced properly. Now, I certainly understand the concern that we want some more immediate coverage. We can accommodate that by doing a staggered row. That would be, if we were going to use plant material that would be that large from a maturity standpoint, we would anticipate that the spacing would be about 20 feet on center. So at some point they would touch and the branches would, would create a mass. But we would not negatively impact the long-term health of the plant material that we're putting in. These are some, you know, some of the things that we make sure to take care of early on. As far as the screening purposes, we really don't feel as though a complete screening of the solar panels is possible. And certainly a softening of that, the reducing the amount of the solar panels that are actually seen through the vegetation is what we are trying to accomplish. So we're not trying to put up a hedge. We still want the berm to look and the plantings to look more natural. But we certainly understand that screening is their first purpose. And we will in fact space them appropriately to maximize their screening potential.
Thank you, Patty.
Ms. Nikki?
Okay, well, Nikki, once again, to the formal conditions, once again, if this moves forward, could we move the solar field sign to Peck Road as requested by Mr. Cameron? Peck Road is a KDOT road, so I can't see it being a, an issue.
I think that would be fine.
Okay.
I think also the sign was, was just a suggestion. When we, we don't need to include a sign, but if we would like a sign, we will definitely have it on Peck Road.
I don't think it'd be any harm on Peck Road. It's a pretty busy road these days.
There's any problem with that. Thank you for that suggestion.
Great. And then next, we will go over the request for the berm height. And then after that, we will get to the fencing. So the next slide touches on the lowering of the north berm from 15 to 30 feet. Jody, do you want to jump in and explain this slide?
Yeah. Under our water resource department, we do work with a lot of contractors that do large mass earth moving. And so we were able to go through our files and find some very similar projects to generate these numbers as well as do the area calculation to lower the berm to an elevation of 760. In total, that would require the moving of almost 30,000 cubic yards of material. So when you're using a 10-yard dumpster or dump truck, we would be looking at about 3,000 trucks that would be needed to move that material. Based on the cross-country course, which we moved almost an identical amount of material on, the prices there would result in moving that material on site of about $552,000. However, with the master plan that we're currently working on with the building management department, we can only move about 5,000 cubic yards of material on site to an area identified north of the multi-use building. So the majority of the material would actually have to be hauled. It would have to be loaded onto trucks and hauled to a clean construction and demolition debris facility. So the cost of actually loading that material onto the trucks as well as the disposal fee at a CCDD facility would be about $72 per cubic yard. And that would result in if we can lose some of the material on site with the south berm extension and near the multi-use building, we're estimating that we're probably looking at well over $1 million, close to $1.5 million for that. In general, with the savings that we're seeing from this project, we do not believe it's practical to spend that amount of money to lower the berm.
Thank you, Jody. So that was the explanation for the, the point about lowering the berm. And then I do have a slide on fencing. Blair, if you could pull up the extra slide that I gave you today. We just got these estimates in last night late. So these are just estimates. You can see in the picture on the right-hand side, the highlighted areas where we are planning to upgrade the fencing. So there will be fencing around all of the, the solar array. The total linear feet of the fence is estimated around 3,400 feet. And the estimated linear feet of the upgraded fence needed that would be visible to residents across the street is around 680 to 700 feet. So the reason that the fence will be visible to those residents is because the southern berm on the western side does taper off quite a bit. And part of our landscaping plan does include building up that berm on the, the south, the southeast side, or excuse me, the southwest side. But the fence could possibly be visible. So we wanted to bring some festing estimate, some fencing estimates to board members today. So we have a cost comparison of budget numbers. So these are not firm proposals. These are just quotes. And they are all quoted at prevailing wage. So the chain link fence will be, GRNE does cover the cost of a chain link fence that will go around the entire solar array. And then we will be covering the cost to upgrade that fence anywhere else along the perimeter of the project. So the difference in upgrades, we have a seven, seven-foot black Ascot aluminum fence. And this option for the fence has been discussed as one of the preferred options by residents and I believe also board members. So this is $90 per linear foot. And then subtracting the, the cost of that fence from the baseline of the, the cost that GRNE would cover to pay for the chain link fence, that would be $28,000 to upgrade to the black aluminum fence. It would be $21,000 to upgrade the fence to treated wood. And it would be $14,000 to upgrade the fence to a black vinyl coated chain link fence. So these are the fencing estimates that we have as of right now, but just to give the board members some ideas.
I would just add too, the yellow line is just shown as we used it for getting the length. The fencing would be located north of the south berm. So it's shown here, north, south of the trees. It's actually, it actually would be north of the south berm, so.
Okay, thank you. So that's a correction to this drawing. The yellow line would be north of the trees. Mr. Wallace?
Wallace, it is, has there been any discussion with GRNE about covering the entire cost of an upgraded fence? Was that ever discussed with them? I don't know if Mr. Peterman could comment on that? If, if we were to approve this on the condition that GRNE provide the black Ascot aluminum fence at their expense, would he be willing to agree to that?
Eric, you can feel free to jump in. I know is, I believe the contract language as of right now states that they will cover the chain link fence surrounding the perimeter. But Eric, feel free to touch on that.
Yeah, that's correct. And thanks for the question, Mr. Wallace. The RFP that was put out specified the scope of work and that's the bid that we responded to. And that's how we priced the product at the chain link fence option. If there were additional upgrades, we would be happy to look at that. That cost would likely impact the PPA rate. So we could build the cost into the product cost and then increase the PPA rate if that's the desire for the county.
Understood.
So the assumption in the power purchase agreement is that the cost of fencing, cost of fencing will not exceed $90,000. So whatever exceeds $90,000, Eric, would have to be some kind of renegotiation.
Correct.
Thank you, Eric. And I, the, the PPA and the land lease are still in the process of being finalized by our state's attorney and also GRNE. So we're still in the process of finalizing both of those documents. We are getting very close. But just to keep you all updated on the status of both of those documents. Blair, if you want to go back to the presentation, I'm just going to give a quick update on Monday's meeting that we had. So on Monday night, we had a Prairie Ridge subdivision homeowners association meeting. So there were residents from two different homeowners associations. And it was mostly residents who live across the street from this project. The, at the meeting, we had, we did a two-hour meeting which focused on answering questions and concerns of the residents. There were 14 participants in person and 18 participants online. We had Eric give a presentation to go more in depth about how solar energy works and how the panels are built. We also touched a little bit on what they are made of, what the panels are made of, answered questions regarding sourcing of the materials, any noise concerns, glare concerns, radiation health, and property value concerns. And then I covered that landscaping plan presentation. I'm glad that we have Patty on today to go a little bit more into detail and give an expert's view. But we also addressed the requested conditions of the residents. And we shared some resolution updates, which I will be sharing, I believe, in the slide after this one. There are, as, is, the way that the meeting went on Monday, there are still concerns among residents regarding this project. As you heard during public comment, we are doing everything in our power to provide answers, adjustments to project design, all the while communicating between our project team, the residents and staff. And I am personally, I have personally gone to their homes, to their decks, to see their views from their backyards and relayed concerns and questions back to our project team. I do appreciate the opportunity to work alongside this group of residents. And I will continue the consistent communication with all of them throughout the course of this project. If you've not already viewed the recording of the meeting that happened Monday night. If you've not already viewed the recording of the meeting that happened Monday night, please feel free to reach out to me. I can send you the link that is on our YouTube page, so King County YouTube. The last slide we have, we included three, three new recommendations in the resolution that was already passed by the Energy and Environment Committee to be moved on.
Excuse me, Madam Chair, I'm sorry. Before you move on to that, I just wanted to get a clarification about something that came up in the, in the meeting the other night. And, and just for the record, regarding supply chain, where the panels are coming from, one of the questions that was raised was whether these are being sourced from Chinese companies. As, as all of you may or may not know, back in June, President Biden took action to bar imports from certain Chinese firms that were using forced labor and other human rights violations to produce these, the raw materials. So I'm wondering if, if maybe Mr. Peterman can just comment on that and let us know where the raw materials, the supply chain are coming from.
Eric, can you take that?
Sure, maybe. Yeah, I'd be happy to. Thank you for the question. It is a very important topic and one that's being discussed in the industry. And, you know, as high as to our, to our President of the United States. And it is something that is very mindful for, from our company. We have committed that we would not use anything related, any products related to anything from that region of China where those accusations are coming from. Specifically for this project, the solar modules are coming from a manufacturer, Canadian solar that's based in, in North America, in Canada. And we would commit to getting documentation from the manufacturer that would make sure that nothing in their product came from this region of China. So happy to discuss that further, but we are certainly mindful of that. And we'll make sure that nothing from, from that topic is incorporated into this product at all.
Thank you, Eric.
Thank you, Mr. Peterman.
Any other questions?
Chairman Davis, Davis with a quick question, comment.
Mr. Davis?
And I'm sorry that, I know this is late in the process. I have an 11 o'clock. I have to go to it. I brought this up in a previous meeting. I understand the, you know, ideal locations, including southern exposures. And that the, you know, south face of the north berm certainly offers that. But, you know, I listened to the concerns of the neighbors and, and a lot of scrambling to try to make it look nice. And there's a lot of expense potentially involved. And I'm reminded that the existence of that berm, at least in part, is to actually be a screen, you know, to cover the view to some of the parking area and some of the sheriff's office and so forth. So its existence is to be the screen. I would be interested in knowing why we can't remove ourselves in terms of this project from the south face of the north berm, go to the other side of the top of that berm and go down the other side and spread out however far we need to, out of view of the neighbors, using the berm as the screen. So I have to run. I'll leave that with you, but hopefully that's, maybe that's something that we could consider. Thank you.
Ms. Cle?
I can actually address that really quick. Thank you for bringing that up. So when we did hear the, of the residents' concerns at first, we wanted to look at pushing the solar field further to the north, towards that detention basin and the judicial center. And we were in discussion with the sheriff. And the sheriff would like us to not move, not impede on any of the developable land that is adjacent to the judicial center to the north of the current proposed project site in the event that there is any kind of expansion of OEM infrastructure. So the, the idea with this project is that we are putting the solar panels on non-developable land. And so we did look at pushing the solar field further to the north to directly address those concerns, but unfortunately, that was not an option.
Right. And the sheriff will be putting that on the, that's not on the master plan yet, but that will be going on to the master plan very soon, that he could put his OEM office, Office of Emergency Management on the campus. So we tried that. And thank you, Mr. Davis, for going up on the berm with me. It was before the teesel was cut down and it was really terrible. Any other questions? Ms. Wonicki?
Forgive me if this was discussed at way earlier, but I drive by there every time, on Bridger Road, every time I come here to the county. And there's a lot of open land to the east, and there's no homes right across from that open land. Is that being preserved for developable, future development for buildings or?
The, the land to the east, right along Bridger is the extension of our stormwater detention basin for the future improvements on the site. The land to the north is, north, northeast. So it would be east of the multi-use building. That's all developable land that's been included in the master plan.
Okay. Thanks, Jody.
Thank you for that question, Mr. Davis. Ms. Cle? Oh, more questions? Okay. Ms. Wonicki, thank you for your questions and answers, comments.
So just quickly, I would like to conclude with some additions to the resolution. We wanted to include a few clauses in the resolution to address the homeowner concerns. So I can read those quickly. Whereas the continued collaboration with neighboring residents, specifically in the Prairie Ridge subdivision, will be upheld by King County Department of Environmental and Water Resources staff throughout the project to ensure partnership goals are met and implemented. Whereas King County at its own expense shall design and construct landscape improvements through the Bridger Road corridor, including the extension of the south berm to the west along Bridger Road at a height of four to five feet, based on the White and Company Plan. The landscaping shall be maintained by the land owner of the land upon which it is installed. And whereas King County at its own expense shall upgrade fencing along the south perimeter of the project where visible to residents in the Prairie Ridge subdivision to decorative fencing made of aluminum or wood. So these are the three additions to the resolution.
Thank you, Ms. Cle. Any questions about the resolution? Ms. Wonicki?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Are we voting on this today?
No, there is no resolution today. What we are seeking today, I would think, is a consensus that this should go on to the executive committee meeting with a gold star of approval. So there's, there's no, this was to answer all the questions came up at the last ENE committee meeting. And just to answer all those questions. And thank you, everyone, for being here. And the next, if, if there's any, so what we're planning on doing is sending this on to executive to be put onto the consent agenda. That will happen on September 8th. And then once we get onto the consent agenda, we will go on to September 14th at the board meeting, you know, the whole board meeting. So there's nothing to vote on today. It was just question and answers. And to make the board members feel comfortable that this has been well thought out and that we are working with the neighbors as much as possible. So.
I would just confirm, staff is looking for a consent from the board that the issues that were brought up were addressed. Otherwise, the item would be pulled from exec as we committed to at the finance committee meeting.
So this, this, this resolution has now passed through the Energy and Environmental Committee, the Administrative Committee, and the Finance Committee. So the special meeting was to advance it to exec with the, with the consensus of the ENE committee and any members of the board who had brought up questions at our last meeting.
Wallace, I, I, I would just voice that I, I continue to have concerns about the impact to the neighbors. I, I actually did take a look at the studies relating to property values. And it's really hard to do a property value analysis on a technology that is this new. Because you would really have to do a long-term analysis on, on property values. The one thing that I did notice in reviewing those studies is that a majority of the solar farms that were used in those studies were in significantly more rural areas. And the houses that were around them were, were, were not of the density of, of the townhomes that we have right, right across from this project. So certainly, I think that solar energy, along with wind energy, is, is the way of the future. And this is something that is a good idea. But any steps that can be taken to lower the impact for the neighboring areas should be, in my estimation, paramount for, for the county as, as we move forward. I think that there are still a lot of moving pieces. And so, you know, certainly, moving forward and getting the money that, that is needed to do this is important, or else it won't happen. But, but I think that we, we, the, the neighbors, the associations have to be an essential part of this process, just to make sure that the impact on them is, is as minimal as, as it can possibly be.
And that has been one of our goals.
Chair?
Mr. Caius?
Yeah, Caius. Yeah, good points. I certainly appreciate the energy that the, our residents have put into it and certainly Mr. Mead's logic. I do have questions, and I think that it should be, we should have the priority. And I was hoping that we have them answered by now to satisfy the visual aspect of the, of the view that the neighbors have and the effect it'll have on them. If, if we pass it, or if we acknowledge that we're, that it goes to exec now without an absolute resolution of the items that we talked about that we're going to discuss with the neighbors, is where at some point does, or we're not past the point where we can say, well, it's not working out, let's stop it right now? Is, is this the point that that, this is the last point we can do that? Or is there another point along the way as we continue to work with the neighbors and say, exec, I don't want to hopefully go through a whole thrashing of what's going on, what we've done at all the committee meetings? Because that's not exactly the purpose of the executive committee. That, is there another place along the line where we can say, this, this isn't going to work. Let's stop it. Or let's delay it, and then it's not going to hurt us? Is this our last stop?
The intent would be that this is the last stop.
Now, Wallace, I, I think just to clarify that, there is a provision in the contract that if the county makes a finding that it's not in our best interest, that we can still terminate the contract. Is that not correct?
That is not correct. If we cannot work out a landscaping plan with the residents, that would not be under the provisions of the PPA to terminate the PPA.
Just to continue my thought that slipped out on the back of my brain here. The, I do have confidence that we can work with the neighbors and get a, a reasonable plan, just like we did with the, the initial judicial center out there. As you said, John, it was, the berm was to cover the judicial center because it was going to be so ugly. Well, it turned out that White, our, our architect company that we're working with right now, White Company, is the one that designed that, and it actually turned out really well. Maybe we didn't even need the berm there, but it was a good place to put the soil, the spoils. So I, I have confidence that we can solve it. I'm just concerned that the steps that are involved in getting us there are in the right order, I guess. So I'd like to see it go forward, but I'm torn by where, we need to make sure. I guess I'm an optimist. I think we can solve the problems with the neighbors. There are the issues with the visuals. So I would like to see it go forward.
We will be working with the neighbors on the landscaping plan forever, I believe. Or at least until we get the trees planted to the best of everybody's liking and get the fence chosen. And so that, I would like to move this forward with consensus from the ENE committee once again. If I hear no objections, I will take that as consensus to move it forward to the executive committee. Thank you, everybody. I would like to, is there any new business? May I have a motion to place the reports on file? Ms. Wonicki?
A second.
Strathman, thank you. There is no need for executive session, to my knowledge. May I have a motion for adjournment?
Point of order, do we have to vote on whether we put the files?
Do we have to vote on the files? Thank you. Call the roll, please.
Alan?
Alan, aye.
Caius?
Caius, yes.
Molina?
Molina, yes.
Strathman?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
Wonicki?
Yes.
Bates?
Yes.
Sess.
Thank you. May I have a motion for adjournment? Ms. Wonicki? Strathman, seconds. All in favor?
Aye.